Okay, I will call to order the November 27th special meeting here in Board of Education. I will ask Mr. Christopherson to please note the roll call. This time, I would ask everyone to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. First item is adoption of the agenda. The most recent agendas are before us with a few changes, a few new hires, some more congratulations in the district, and I am going to add one more report. After the superintendent's report, Mr. Bischoff will report on delegate assembly. And with those changes, I would ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So, seconded?
A motion seconded to adopt the agenda, those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Okay, the agenda is adopted. Our dates to remember, December 5th, here in high school parent teacher conferences from 5:30 to 8:45. December 6th is an early release. December 11th is the Board of Education meeting at 5:30 here in the Instructional Planning Center. December 25th through the 29th, holiday break, no school. January 1st, New Year's Day holiday, Happy New Year. January 8th is Board of Education meeting, 5:30 in the IPC, and the rest of the dates are on the agenda. Our next item is community input for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone present for community input for anything not on the agenda? Seeing nobody step forward to the mic, we have no conflict disclosure and consideration of waivers, so we will move into the consent agenda. The superintendent of schools recommends approval of the following. We have nine new hires to the district that require Board approval to be covered by our workman's compensation plan. We have no contracts or resignations, and we have consideration and approval of bills. That is our consent agenda. It can be passed with one motion, or if any board member would like to pull any item out for special consideration, we can do so. Move approval consent?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Okay, consent agenda is approved. Now, I will turn it to our superintendent as he celebrates his successes in our district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. First of all, and congratulations, those that have been submitted across the district, include congratulating Jada Schillingstad and Haven Hines for being selected first team All E S D in volleyball. Haven Hines and Holly Neus are also commended for being selected to the double A All Tournament Team, the state volleyball tournament where the Tigers were consolation champions, so congratulations to the gals on representing our school. Congratulations Alex Hill, Travis Kleinsauster, Zach Simmonsma, and Isaac Carr for qualifying for academic All-State in football, which is a combination of their varsity participation as well as their academic grade point average. Now, the following teams and groups qualified for the Activities Association Academic Achievement Award by collectively having a combined GPA of 3.0 or higher, boys golf, girls cross-country, All-State chorus football team, football cheerleaders, competitive cheer, competitive dance, volleyball team, oral interpretation, boys soccer, girls soccer. Certainly, that's an example of how that students who are busy and active and have responsibilities also tend to do better academically, so we encourage students to get involved in activities, in clubs, organizations, et cetera. Next on our list, all the students who participated in the Huron Middle School Quiz Bowl should be commended. Huron Team 3, which includes Mason Davis, Madeline Freiberger, Seki Noka, and Noah Beck won first place by defeating Pierre in a 6-1 victory in the finals. Huron 2 took fourth place, winning over Madison 2. Congratulations to the teams for a job well done. And also, congratulations to Chris Clays and the second grade students at Madison 2-3 Center who participated in the fabulous 50's program in open house on November 13th and 14th. The event was a huge success and was enjoyed by all at the Madison 2-3 Center. Have some thank yous to pass along. Thank you to all those who volunteered to make the Huron Middle School Quiz Bowl invitational a wonderful academic experience for the six middle school teams and the nine teams who came from surrounding schools to compete. And thank you to Mark Smokey Houston and Dakota Provisions for the use of the turkey costume for the Buchanan K-1 Center's first graders to celebrate their first grade Turkey Trouble Day. And I believe as an eyewitness that that costume was actually borrowed a second day and was part of the kindergarten feed on the day before we had a break as well. That is our congratulations and our thank yous.
Thank you, Mr. Nebelsek. Moving into Board reports, our first report will be the presentation of the Classified Employee of the Month. Mrs. Hines will be presenting to Robert Brooks, a sped para educator at the Buchanan K-1 Center.
I believe Mrs. Waylander is joining her.
Okay, with Mrs. Waylander presenting also.
You can say. So, Robert is a special ed para at Buchanan, so Lori's gonna kinda talk about what his job entails.
Robert works in our Buchanan DLC program. He works one-on-one and in small group with students with very high needs, and he makes sure they have all their needs met by taking them everywhere they need to be, working on their academics, working on behaviors, and all other needs that the students have, and he does an excellent job of this. He has researched and implemented the technology needed to help make this one particular student independent in a general classroom, so has helped him learn how to communicate and use the different technology to make him successful in the classroom.
His coworkers have said that he's a hard worker and a team player. He's very positive. He communicates well with all team members. He's excited when a student succeeds. He accepts all suggestions, and so he's a blessing to have at Buchanan. Congratulations.
Why don't we get an administrator on each side for the papers picture here, okay?
Thank you for your service, Mr. Brooks. Okay, our next report will be the next phase of the one-to-one technology in the high school presented by Mr. Radke and Mr. Allers.
Well, they're going up there. I'd like to speak for just a moment to this. I really, really appreciate the legwork that has been done to come up with the report tonight that we were one of the first schools in South Dakota to go to a one-to-one several series ago, and each time we come up for renewal. I'm very, very grateful for what I think you'll learn tonight has been pretty detailed research into where to go next.
Thank you. A little bit history of the devices we've had in the past. The program started with Gateway laptops, and when they hit their financial difficulties, then we moved to the HP laptops, but because of financial restrictions, we were no longer able to have the freshmen have them, so we weren't a true one-to-one. We were one-to-one 10th grade through 12th grade. And you'd be surprised at how many classes have a mixture of freshmen along with other grades, so there were a lot of classes that even though a lot of the kids, or maybe even most of the kids, had a device, if even just a few freshmen in the class didn't have it, they just weren't being used as much as possible. So, when we looked at devices to put one in every student's hand, the two main things we, two main devices we looked at four years ago was an iPad and a Chromebook. And at that time, Mrs. Moon and the teachers involved in evaluating went with the iPad as the device. So, when we moved forward with looking at where we were gonna go next, we looked at three devices, an HP laptop, an iPad 5, and an HP Chromebook as three possibilities. They're three different price points, they all have their different strengths and weaknesses, and we basically talked about two main questions, well, actually, three main questions in looking at which device do we wanna look at. We talked a lot about, does it prepare them for what comes next, whether it be college, tech school, military workforce, or something else? Is it getting them ready for what they choose next? The other thing we talked a lot about was, as far as in our school district, what can we do within the classroom? Student use, teacher use, college skill set. We talked a lot with the tech department about management of the device as far as being able to control what the students are using, what apps they have on the device, how we can easily get in to see what they're working on, as well as connectivity, just like we can connect to the Apple ITV and it's automatic. What are the possibilities with the three devices? Of course, cost, and then mobile versus portable. This was new language to me. Portable means you can move it and use it in different places like a laptop. Mobile means you can move it on the run. So, if you're doing activities in the hallway, can you be using it on the go? The HP laptop, the positives, for the most part, I actually, I'd say, every college student that I visited with said they're using a laptop of some type, whether it's an Apple, an HP, a Dell, or something. That's the platform they're using in college. I asked as far as a transition, was it difficult? They said no more difficult than going from using an HP to Apple. Different operating system, but pretty, pretty easy to figure out. They didn't feel like there were any huge gaps in what we couldn't offer in high, what we offered in high school with the iPad. A lot of small things like the iPad keyboard, when you're typing, you press shift and all your letters become capital, and you press, and you press the letter you want. When you're keyboarding, you have to hold down shift to get a capital letter. A lot of little things like that. File management, because you don't manage the files with an iPad. Whatever app you're in, when you close the app, it's saved in the app. A little bit different when you're working on Microsoft's Office Suite. If you're in Word, you have to save it, you have to decide where to save it, and then when you open it back up, you've gotta know where to go find it. So, that was the discussions I had with college students as far as, as far as what worked well with them, what challenges they faced. Negatives, it is the most expensive of the three devices. It's more portable than mobile, they can't really use a lot of things outside of it being a standard place, whether in your desk or at a counter. Teachers said they would struggle with it, just, and I'll talk a little bit more about the iPad and its presentation capabilities. And then Roger said, as far as management and connectivity, they really are a standalone device. It's, it's not as easy to manage, manage them from their end. The HP Chromebook, Roger actually got us a Chromebook to use so we could kind of feel it out, and I, the summer, I used it for a week myself. I said, I've gotta see how different is this than iPad that I use on a daily basis. I would, I would call it basically an iPad Lite. It looks like an iPad, most of the features are online. You can, it does have, you can hook up to a flash drive to learn the file management portion that the kids talked about not having. Connectivity was an issue as far as how are we able to, if a student creates something on the device and then wants to share it with the classroom, they'd have to go to a standard wall plug somewhere. We haven't been able to find a reliable wireless connection. The hugest, the hugest, the largest positive with the HP Chromebook was cost. It was $70 cheaper than the iPad and 160 less than the laptop. Does have a connected keyboard, again, a little bit closer to the college skill set if students are going to college, a little bit larger screen. The iPad 5, the biggest short, shortcoming of the iPad 5, it has a small screen and the keyboards are not connected, so it is, it isn't a laptop-type model. But to see the positives, I just, the last couple classrooms that I was in, Mrs. Holferdys' classroom, her German, three or four students, there was a lot of commotion going on in the hallway outside of her room, so I had to check it out, and they had written the dialogue for ordering food in a restaurant, and after they wrote the dialogue, they had to film themselves going through the dialogue and then present it to the rest of the class, and the rest of the class got to score them, something along those lines. All things that they couldn't do with the other devices because of the camera feature, the mobile part of it. The other classroom that I was in recently was Mr. Musil's classroom, and he had created, I don't know if it was PowerPoint or Keynote or some type of presentation, and then as he went through the device, or through the presentation, he had several equations where they had to balance molecules. I was, the college chemistry class. And he was able to write on his iPad as he was going through, so it wasn't just a standalone, this is my presentation, and look at, he could work the problems with the kids so they could see how he went through. And the best thing I thought was, because he's wirelessly connected, he was amongst the kids, so he could watch and make sure that they were doing the same thing he was as he was going through. So, I think the biggest advantage of the iPad, and it really has met the needs of the teachers and Mrs. Moon, the, their goal of making it an integrated device into the school day. I don't know if there's a lot of our classrooms where they don't use it in some way, shape, or form every class period. I think there's some classes that if the internet is down, we struggle because the iPad has become such an integral part of the classroom. If we switch to one of the other devices, I, while it does have its positives, I could see us going back to the way it was where, when it's time to take notes, take out your laptops, or it's time to work on Excel, take out your laptops. So, the biggest advantage to me is just how integrated they've become to the school day at Huron High School. The next slide, I will let Roger go through.
We'll talk about this slide, then I'm gonna switch over to the iPad itself and, and present a couple of things that make an iPad unique, and kinda show you where iPads are going over the next few years. So, Mike's job is to look at it from a perspective of classroom use and how the, the teacher's integrated into their curriculum. My perspective is more management, and it's more cost, you know, cost, what factors those play. So, I put together a little chart here that Mike put into his presentation so we can kinda see the differences. So, when you look at the three options there, Chromebook, iPad 5, and HP laptop, there are, there is no doubt that the HP, that the Chromebooks are cheaper. You just can't get past that, that for $175 plus a few add-on things, you've got a device. And then you go to the other end of the spectrum, the HP laptop, or whatever laptop you buy, Dell, MacBook, that's always gonna be the more expensive end because that gives you the full-blown PC or laptop experience. And the iPad 5 kinda hits that sweet spot in the middle where it has more to offer than a Chromebook, but yet is cheaper than the full-priced laptop, and we believe that the iPad is close enough to being able to do everything that a laptop can do, that budget-wise, it makes more sense for us to continue to keep using the iPads that we have now. So, like I said, you can't beat the price of a Chromebook, but there are a lot of features that the iPad has that Mike talked about, the, the interaction that, that can be generated in the classroom with iPads, and front and rear-facing cameras and, and things like that that just can't be beat. And the other part, the other part of it from my perspective is the management piece. I tell this story to all of the administrators and everybody that'll listen to me, but the example I give is, when I try to manage a device, I wanna be able to get these things in front of the kids as fast as possible with the software that the teachers wanna be able to use. And since we've been using iPads, we've got our system kinda, kinda zeroed into where a teacher can come to me at 9 o'clock in the morning and say they need this app for a student, and by 10 o'clock in the morning, that device, those devices, those 30 or 40 devices, 100 devices, whatever it is, can have that app downloaded on the device, ready to go when class starts with no physical touching of the device by me or any member of our staff. Students may have to go to the, to a portal we have to download it, or we can actually just push it right out and say, we want this app to be on these 50 devices and it does it automatically. So, the Apple system is, is very well-developed in that way, it makes management for us way simpler. If we tried to do the same thing where a teacher said, I have 50 laptops, I need that software installed, we'd be lining kids up outside the help desk door, just have them come in one at a time and push that, or download that software from a flash drive or something like that. So, it's very easy for us to manage, we've got all those systems, that, that management system already in place, and it works really well for us. So, like I said, that iPad 5 kinda hits that, that sweet spot right in the middle there, and it, when I look at a Chromebook, I see it as more of a, what I call, one-dimensional device, very good at the web browsing piece, the very basic, you know, word processing, that type of stuff, but if you wanna go beyond, then an iPad is a nice stepping stone to get you there. So, I wanted to switch over to my device here on the iPad and show you just a couple of things real quick if I can get connected. So, one of the things that we hear about with iPads is the idea that one of the, one of the concerns that people have about iPads is the fact that we don't have keyboards. A physical keyboard, that is, obviously, you've got the one on the glass, but, so what we're doing to, to make that better for the people who have those concerns is built into our budget for this next go-around, if it's approved, would be to buy, or have the option to buy at least, a physical keyboard for every iPad that, for a student who needs one. Right now, we've always had that option. We use Bluetooth keyboards, and they work pretty well for people who want them. We're gonna take one step forward even further. These iPad, or these keyboards that we have found actually have a lightning connector on them, the same connector that you use to charge your, charge your iOS devices, and so when we plug this guy in, it instantly takes off and becomes a keyboard for that device, and you can truly make it, and we got a better kickstand on the case itself. So, when I pull that up, now I have the full laptop experience, I have the keyboard, I have the screen, it's all right there in front of everybody, you know, for you, if you will, if you wanna make this thing a laptop, you put it down in front of you, and I now have a laptop-type atmosphere to be able to work in. I can pull up a document, so. The other thing that, that has come from Apple with their newest iOS versions, I lost it. Thank you. Another thing that people have concerns with, with the iPads are the fact that you can only have one app open at a time, and so if you're trying to take notes while you're browsing the web or trying to capture something from Safari, that can be difficult to constantly have to be opening and closing screens and having to switch back and forth can be tedious for the user. With iOS 11, that just came out back in, I believe it was September, Apple's taken steps to try to eliminate that. On an iPad now, they have this dock on the bottom of the screen that looks similar to what you would find in a Windows machine or on a Mac, where you can actually have your top favorite apps there along the bottom, and then, for example, if you want to pull up a website and you wanna look at that information on that website, and then you wanna take some notes at the same time, it's very easy for you to swipe up from the bottom, grab your notepad, and just drag it over here to the side, and now I've got notes, and I've got two apps open side by side, and I can resize this window, I can do all those things. And now it becomes more of a multi-purpose device, where I can do two things at once, I can be reading, browsing the web over here, looking for information that I need, while I'm also over here with my keyboard, my full keyboard, typing, taking notes, and doing the things that a student needs to do in class. So, I have that ability now that before this year, we never had with the iPad before. So, again, that iPad kinda keeps jumping forward and getting closer to what a laptop can truly be, and every year gets a little bit better, our management gets a little bit better, and we're really happy with where they're going with their iPad technology right now. And then the last thing I wanna show you, talking about an Apple, an Apple, or a Chromebook being a one-dimensional device versus what a iPad can do. I went to a Apple training seminar here a couple weeks ago up in Watertown, and they showed me this app. Oh, they talk about, the idea that's coming along now with Apple is the augmented reality. And so, augmented reality is this idea, if you ever watch a football game on Sunday, and you're trying to see where the Vikings have to go for their first down, and you see that yellow line on the screen, that's an example of augmented reality. It's technology laid over top of what is truly happening in front of you, and so that's kinda where Apple is going, where the technology field is going, is these apps that are, can integrate augmented reality into what you're doing, something that a Chromebook is gonna have a harder time to do because it doesn't have that rear-facing camera. So, they showed me this app that I thought was just the coolest thing, and I thought it would be, have very practical use.
Welcome to InsightArt.
Have very practical use in a science classroom, and just to kinda give you an idea of what happens here, so you scan the floor, and then it puts a person directly in front of you, a three-dimensional person, augmented reality, and if you're studying the heart, for example, you can walk in and you can look at the heart right on the screen, and notice how the background is still what's really in the room. So, it's augmented reality, not virtual reality where you're in your own world, you're still seeing what's around you. So, I can walk around to the back of this thing and look at it, and notice as I get closer, the heartbeat actually gets louder. And I can step back, and so you can see all the different parts of the heart while still maintaining a connection to what's really in the room in front of you. I can tap on this.
Normal heart rate.
Gives me some information on heart.
Now, take a look at this healthy human heart beating at a level of 80 beats per minute. A normal heart rate is defined by 60 to 100 heartbeats per minute in resting adults. Ratacardia is, per definition, below 60, and tachycardia above 100 beats per minute.
So, it gives you an idea.
Myocardial infarction. Due to a lack of oxygen supply through a blockage in the coronary vessels, cells can be damaged or die if not treated quickly. A myocardial infarction, also known as a heart attack, is the irreversible death of heart muscle tissue.
So, we'll stop there, just I don't wanna go too far over time here, but it kinda gives you the idea of what an iPad can do that a Chromebook or, or another device, like an, even an HP laptop would have a more difficult time doing, because it doesn't have that mobility feature like Mike was talking about, it doesn't have the ability to move and still be actively doing things like this kinda stuff. So, we feel like that, that iPad really kinda hits that sweet spot both financially and then also to be able to do more three-dimensional things like this that a Chromebook, while it's cheaper, just can't really pull off. So, I think that's all we have for now, if you have any more, Mike? Or if you have questions?
I would just add, one of the teachers before we came to present tonight, one of my more challenging teachers when it comes to technology came and visited, and they said, you know, I, I just wish budget wasn't an issue, we could do things right and give everybody a MacBook. And I said, well, think about everything you do in your classroom with the iPad, would you trade to have every student with a MacBook? And they thought for a long time, and I could see them kinda going through the list in the head of the things that they do in their classroom with the iPad, and they're, you're probably right, we'd be more limited with, with that than with an iPad. So, that, that really had an impact on me, that even they could recognize that this really has become an integrated device, and that even if we got them the best of the best of the laptops, there'd be a lot of things that they couldn't do. So, that's, that's the direction we'd like to ha, head, to continue with iPads, especially with all of the, the new discoveries Roger has shown us. There were a lot of things we'd come up with and say, well, the iPad can't do this, like the side-to-side window, and he said, well, now it can, running Microsoft Office Suite. Well, we can't do that, and Roger said, well, actually, yeah, I did a little research, it can. So, I think more and more, they're trying to get it almost to be a true replacement for, for a laptop, but that's, that's where we feel comfortable moving forward, I think that's where most of our teachers are as well.
Hey, Roger? Could you talk a little bit about the different types of maintenance and repairs on the various options there?
Um, yeah, with the iPads, the really, the only thing that we, the majority of the things we have problems with would be screen-related. Obviously, they're, they're made out of glass on the front, so if they get dropped, the screen's gonna break. We have, you know, our guys in the help desk have gotten so good at that that they can fix a broken screen now in less than an hour, if they have to. And that's really about the only thing that breaks, given, unless it's something really tragic where there's a fire or something is run over by a car or something crazy like that, but the normal wear and tear use is pretty much the screen. And we can buy our screens very cheap online, and we can replace those very easily. I don't have any experience, we don't have any Chromebooks per se that are in the kids' hands right now. From what I've heard from other technology directors, they have issues with keyboards and hinges and screens, and I believe those, while I don't have any experience myself, my understanding is those are relatively easy to replace as well because there's not much to a Chromebook, but there's more parts to break on a Chromebook, you know, like I said, screens, hinges, keyboards, whereas these guys just have basically the screen. And then finally, our experience with laptops has been they're a little more complicated and expensive to fix, and when we've bought those en masse before, we've gone and done more of what they call accidental damage protection, where we pay an extra fee on the laptop, and then we just send that thing off to a depot to have them repair it for the first three years at least, and then we start trying to salvage parts and things like that after year three. So, they all have their pro, you know, pros and cons as far as the, the repairs go. We found that the iPads themselves have been pretty easy to repair, other, because it was because it was really just the one part that truly breaks.
The iPad probably requires the least amount of maintenance.
I think so. I think so, yep. Yep.
Any other questions?
I have some when the board's done. Mr. Chairman? Okay, the administrators have heard this over and over, that superintendent has a huge concern about making sure that we put the pressure on students to learn keyboarding skills. We have keyboarding skill development in the elementary, which is really quite commendable for the limited staffing that we put toward that. But I, for what I've seen happen with my own children through college and grad school, I want to make sure that our language department, our social studies department has the green light that if they want to have keyboards in their classrooms, which will be plugged into the machines when they're there, that we can push the agenda of keyboard development so that our grammar scores, which are not high enough and our communication, written communication, which I observe is not strong enough, can be enhanced. And so the much less expensive and immediate use of keyboards will not just be for students who choose to use them, but the principal, the administrators will have the prerogative of making them a requirement in certain classes so that we become active learners. That's my first point. It's nothing I haven't told you many times, it's a concern to me. And then Roger, on the district level, when we free up 600 four-year-old iPads, you've had a plan for the last three years and I know that you have grade levels that are anxious for bringing them up a generation. So if you would talk about the phase-in possibilities that you see once you reclaim 600 iPads, I'd appreciate the board and the public hearing about that.
Absolutely. The big issue that we have right now at K3, so that'd be in Cannon and Madison, is that they are currently using, and the design that we have there is, in every core classroom, we have six iPads, six iPad minis. And they are there for basically at those grade levels, K3, they do a lot of center work. That means the teachers over here working with six kids. There's six kids over here doing something independently and there's six kids over there doing something independently or with the help of a para or whatever. And the iPad minis are a great way to have one of those centers where a student can pick up an iPad, they all know how to use it. They start the app that helps them practice their math skills or whatever it is and they can go sit down at the table and actually work on those skills. That's the K3 model. But the problem is those iPad minis have gotten to the stage where they're really old, they're really slow. They don't take the newer iOS updates anymore. And because they're the smaller form factor, the iPad mini, you can't do online assessments with them. There's no smarter balance that can be taken, there's no NWA test that can be taken. You can't use the smaller platform for that. So our goal would be if this is all approved, we would take those iPads that are still functioning at the high school, move them down in K3 at least and eliminate all of those minis and put those newer, bigger ones in place. And that just opens up the realm again for a faster device, bigger screen. Now I can take NWA tests with it, now I can do smarter balance with it, all the different assessments, all of that makes it a more functional device right off the bat without us having to spend one more dime because these are already paid for. We can bring those in and upgrade at least K3 and then maybe even have enough to sprinkle through, you know, K5 or even higher if we have to, to get those, to get more bang for those dollars to be able to get, to utilize those iPads more. And then we pull out old iPads, we pull out old laptops that are still running older versions of Windows that are super old and super slow and try to replace them with these type of devices that as we've discussed tonight can do the majority of the work that needs to be done. We still, K8, we still maintain one PC lab, whether a laptop or a desktop, per grade level. So if there's something that an iPad simply can't do or you truly want to sit down and use that keyboard for a keyboarding class, you have that option to take your class to that grade levels or to that grade level lab. We think that that's important so that kids can experience that type of technology too. And it gives us that nice balance of having all of the different devices. So we've really got a nice mix and we have a nice growing model of starting off at the six iPads at that lower level and then moving up to our eighth grade is one-to-one, but they don't take them home. And then moving on to the high school where it's one-to-one, the full-blown deal where they can go ahead and take them home and use their, do their work and all of that. So it's a growth model that starts off basic, basic and follows the kids right along through till 12th grade. And we feel like that's really been a good service to provide to them.
And then two other questions because this is my third time through the report. First to my office, then to board leadership and now to the board and the public. Give us a little bit of a description of what happens four, five, six, seven. And then when you're done with that, I'd ask that the microphone go back to the principal for a description of what our ninth grade looked like this last year for the first time. Because the board's K-12 vision has to be able to tie all this together. Roger?
Grades four, five are Washington and what they have there is they have the same six iPads per classroom model, but they have the bigger iPads already. Just as we've done purchasing, it kind of worked out that that grade, fourth and fifth grade level was ready for new technology. So we were able to supplant and put in that new, the bigger screens and already. So that's why I say we're going to focus really hard on K3. We're not forgetting about four, five. We're just saying that they've already got those big devices. Doesn't mean we can't add more to those numbers, but we're going to start off and get rid of those minis first. That's four, five. Six, seven is kind of a mix. We have in every classroom, every core classroom in six and seven, they have a set of something. Some of them have old laptops, some of them have iPads, but they have a set of something in their classroom that can be used at any time in addition to their grade level normal lab. Okay, so there's a mix, more of a mix there, but more devices so they can get closer to that one-to-one concept, although the kids don't carry them around the building. They stay in the classroom where those devices are normally set up. So like I said, it kind of grows as they start off with the basic, basic six minis, then up to four, five where it's six big ones. And then it's up to six and seven where it's, everybody's got a device in the room, but they don't leave the room. Eighth grade, they carry the device around with them in the building, but it stays in the building and then follows up to the high school where it's full-blown one-to-one.
Okay. And Mike, would you talk about the eight, nine discovery you had this year compared to the last decade?
Sure. We changed the format of our freshman orientation. The last several years, we've hired an outside company to come in and put on the orientation for us. And they focused on making the transition fun. We're going to care about each other, we're going to have a good time in high school. But they, in my opinion, didn't focus on what I think are the nuts and bolts of being ready for high school, focusing on the study skills, focusing on attendance. And so Mrs. Conichney and I and the homeroom teachers and the counselors kind of put together three hours that we thought would give them better foot in the door as far as being ready to go day one. And that included the last 45 minutes of them getting their iPads and us walking them through four or five different apps that we know that they would use on a daily basis. And I blocked out 45 minutes, we were all in the auditorium together. I was going through step-by-step with the projection with the homeroom teachers and the counselors out amongst the kids to help any issues. And we were done in 25 minutes and I had to figure out what to do for 20 minutes because they were right with me. They had already done, they, I think they had already had experience with all but one of the apps that I wanted to have them use with us over their shoulder to help them log into, I was shocked and pleasantly surprised. And so when I mentioned that to the teachers, right away, they had five more apps that we could work on next year. So I was very, very surprised with how prepared they were as far as being up to date with the technology.
The next step then, Mr. Chairman, is I'll be asking the board officers at your agenda review next Monday for permission to bring this initiative to the school board at the December meeting, seeking approval to move forward with the next four years being again iPad technology at the high school.
Okay, does anybody have any further questions or comments? Thank you, gentlemen, very good report. Okay, our next report will be from Mrs. Tompkins, giving us an update on the summer feeding mobile lunch.
Okay, good evening. I'm carrying on with the mobile lunches for summer here. And I've gotten the survey done and back and the responses in it were pretty good. I've spoken to child and adult nutrition about what's expected as far as health code requirements and what we need to do to get this going. I think we have a pretty solid footing there. Parent surveys, we ended up getting 326 responses back. Over half the respondents said that it would be beneficial for them or others. The number of children that they said they could send would be 488 between one and 18. I do think some of those are multiples because I think some parents clearly got more than one survey and filled them out. So I don't think there's actually maybe that many. Let's see. I asked if they were feel safe in allowing us to let their children come and eat with us at a mobile site and surprisingly, that did pretty well. So they apparently would trust us for that. I did have a few who said they'd like to walk their children down, but that would be fine too. I was a bit surprised that about a quarter parents weren't aware of our current summer program at the middle school. But I hope the survey helped, you know, get the word out for that too. And I asked which area of town they lived in, northwest, northeast, southeast, southwest, and where they'd like to see, and clearly where they'd like to see the mobile sites would be where they lived. Thirty-seven percent said southwest, 25 southeast, six northeast and 3% northwest, which kind of surprised me a little bit because that's where the middle school's already located. But I think we're just so far away that perhaps if we hit different areas of southeast and southwest, it would work. Right now, my next goal is going to be to work on the mobile sites themselves and get partnered and see if I can get partners for sites where we can go and work that out with them. And that's on the agenda for me for tomorrow. Anybody have any other questions?
Questions for Carol?
Most importantly, do you have any concerns with this now two-to-three-month walk of research as to creating mobile food for children next summer? Because if you have concerns, that's a part of the research as she prepares.
You're going to work next then on figuring how many points you're going to have around town because you don't know that yet, do you?
I think, I think right now I'm planning tonight, three. I'm not sure that we can handle more than that. By the time staff would come in, prepare the lunches, get them all loaded and get out to the sites, I'm sincerely doubting whether we can do more than three this summer. And if it goes over really well, we can always change that next year. Whatever, I'm a little afraid to get too many sites and get too bogged down to start with. So I think three sites to start with might be okay.
Start and see how it goes from there.
So at these sites, the student walks up and there are, do we have to provide table space? Do we go to a park where it's already available? Or is this a bag lunch that they could take somewhere else?
It is a bag lunch, they cannot leave with it, they have to eat on-site. So the problems with that are going to be weather related. If it's raining, we would not feed. If there's a storm warning, we're not coming out that day. And we're going to have to make that really clear from the beginning, you know, to the parents that this is a day you do not want to send your child to go eat. We might get to a site and feed the first group and it might pour rain. Then we're done. Sites two and three will not, you know, be fed that day. They do have to stay and eat. I'm hoping in partnering with maybe the city and a church, those are my plans for two of the sites right now. And if we can partner and everything works out well, I'm hoping to either borrow picnic tables or work on getting some picnic tables at our sites and possibly using some that belong to the city or figuring the rest of it out. But we've got some ideas on how to get some picnic tables out there.
Are there going to be some like general guidelines so that if normally my kid goes, but I say, oh, there's an 80% chance of rain, you might not be going? Like, how do I know if I'm sending him?
If it's not raining and there's no warning out, we're probably going to be there. You know, but if it is physically raining or storming, then that's just got, I mean, if the rain, it's just raining, we're just going to say no because that's pretty easy for everybody to understand. If it's raining, we're not coming. If there's a warning, we're not going to come. You know, I don't want to get somebody there halfway and then realize that, you know, they shouldn't be out in a storm warning. And so we're just, we're going to probably miss a few days because of that, but I think the kids are going to be better served by staying home when it's really yucky outside rather than getting partway there.
Mine would be a follow-up to those situations you just described. Is the home base, middle school kitchen and common still going to serve every day?
Yes.
That's what I thought. I'm just, I'm walking through it with the public. Go ahead and I'll ask my next question.
We are going to do hot meals at the middle school. The ones for mobile feeding will all be cold meals, there'll be sack lunches. We're trying to do some different fun things. We're going to use a lot of fresh vegetables and fresh fruits. I mean, we're going to offer some things hopefully to entice them to come sometimes. You know, if they get the menu and look at the menu, hopefully they'll come and go, oh, that looks good, I'm going to come. So I've had parents respond in the survey both ways and say, you know, this is really great, but we're still going to go to middle school. And I've had parents say, this is really great, we're going to probably go if it's near us because we can't get to the middle school.
Right. And so my follow-up, because everything you described, I've heard in previous reports. So most of this are questions for those who are watching.
Okay.
Okay. My follow-up then to Board Member Lee is the issue that if they plan on their child eating and the weather is not conducive to serving outside, logic would tell me they still have the option of going to the middle school.
Yes.
And you will have to try to figure out how many of those parents who you are not going to will bring their children all the way to the middle school for a meal. Is that a, did I follow that logically? Okay. So that's what I wanted to get across. It'd be kind of a two-fold discussion. One is whether you're eating and then two, whether you can take them to the middle school if the mobile is not available.
Further questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Okay, our next report will be Mr. Nevillesek with the superintendent's report.
I have several items, hopefully none of them will take too long this evening. We're continuing to work first with our local principals, instructional coach, our instructional director and the school counselors on what our needs would be with a three-tier graduation program that came up at the large school retreat for superintendent several weeks ago. We had superintendents here from Watertown and Mitchell and Aberdeen who met last week and are now putting together a draft plan. I actually received the draft while we were sitting here tonight that we will take on December 6th, a week from Wednesday, to the state superintendent's legislative meeting and introduce it to find out if there is some interest in going back to the program that I knew as a high school principal. The middle tier would be exactly what every student in the state is currently expected to do. Okay? And upper tier would finally be a way, and there's a bias in my language, you can hear by my tone, finally be a way for us to talk from day one as freshmen, how do you truly take the college prep? And there's a diploma waiting at the end if you do. You've heard research from Mr. Radke over the past on that the connection between the classes that our students take, the grades and attendance in those classes, and each time they take our toughest curriculum and attend regularly and get a B or above, they get a 24 on their ACT and they're on their way. And so that would be known as a distinguished diploma. And why this is coming up now is because the governor's initiative on workforce development, we would like to be players in a standard diploma which after students have been in school a year and their parent and the student and the school counselor and the principal get together and do some real tough work on dropout prevention. That's so many students, when they're behind after one year, the propensity for them to drop out is huge compared to the likelihood of graduating. However, at that point, working on what the governor said last summer, we were able to alter their diploma to give them some specific job-ready skills. We feel we could reduce that percentage of students that are simply dropping out of school and then becoming dependent on the system for how they survive. So I'm excited for that work, whether it takes two years or whether it takes two months to continue that work. I just finished chairing the school finance accountability board. On November 16th and 17th, we heard hearings from many schools. And then today, we received the, I think it's 80-page report, which was reviewed and approved to send to appropriations, appropriations to do their work next week. I appreciate the time you've allowed me to work on that appropriation. It meets next Monday, December 4th, which is the reason why we have to change our. Monday, December fourth, which is the reason why we have to change our luncheon because Senator White is on appropriations and he and I will both be in peer next Monday when joint appropriations receives the finance accountability board report and recommendations. Due to that, the legislative luncheon has been moved, I believe you've received this electronically from me, but here's the correspondence, December eighteenth, Monday eighteenth at the high school at eleven-thirty. And I'll be finding out from the cabinet members tomorrow if they have legislative issues, then they're certainly welcome to come to that. Your host administrators this year are from the high school and the three legislators can be there on the eighteenth. We want to get started right away at eleven-thirty. Whether we eat at eleven-thirty or whether Carol begins serving food and we eat as this goes on, but I think if we start at eleven-thirty, all five board members are able to be there for at least the first part of the meeting. And David is the one that had a conflict on that. So that is coming up on December eighteenth. The calendar committee, I'm announcing tonight so the community can begin thinking about interests or concerns that they'd want to communicate with my office or communicate with a board member if they had any concerns before the calendar committee meets. I'm proposing meeting on the second day back on Wednesday, January third, for about an hour. The first part of the calendar committee meeting will be to receive testimony from anyone in the public who would like to have an opinion offered. That's something we started a year ago and was really well received by the public. Noted, no one testified, but the fact that they had the opportunity to bring their concerns there. I also would like the board in the next month to think about whether, now that we seem to have a somewhat predictable calendar, whether we should consider a two-year calendar. We would then be working a second year out each year because it would allow us to, sometimes I think, I don't know, Mr. Radke, if you get the questions, but I used to get questions as a principal about planning graduation and those things two years out. And so since the calendar appears to be less volatile and more predictable, I may be seeking your permission to look at going two years out with the calendar and then we would, we would continue on that format. We'd meet every year, but we'd meet for working on the second year out. We missed what's been traditionally a November meeting, however, it could just as easily be a January meeting, so if I missed it, I'm apologizing and if you don't care if we moved it, I'm letting you know. But the HEA joint negotiation, negotiation rules meeting meets with your two negotiators, which I believe this year are Mr. Van Berckham and Mr. Bischoff, right? They meet with the board or with the HEA negotiators and with the school attorney. And it's a meeting that only lasts about fifteen minutes and lays out the rules and the expectations for negotiations. And it's been well received over the years and it's allowed things in the future to be quite smooth. They will set the dates, which are the last, the proposed dates will be the last board meeting after that board meeting that night on, in February and the two March meetings. That's usually what happens. Sometimes we only use two sessions, but, but that's when it's set up. That rules meeting will be also December eighteenth at three forty-five in the superintendent's office. So it's the same day as legislative luncheon for those who are involved in both of those. I finally have presented to the administrators and to the board officers before tonight, section J's recommended revisions from the superintendent. Mr. Kristofferson forwarded that to the entire board tonight. This is my plan for section J. I would like to seek permission from the board officers to introduce that on, at our December eleventh board meeting, yes, December eleventh board meeting, which is the only one in December for introduction, to have the first round hearing on section J on January eighth and the second round on January twenty-second. Then what I want to do in order to reach one of the goals that the board challenged me to have this last year is try to set up perhaps a four-month window for each section so that our review becomes, now we, we reviewed section K just a few months ago, we'll get J back in order and then start reviewing a layout, a calendar, it can be amended by you in the future, but it, you will know which section is up for grabs if you and/or the public, as we announced, who wants to get online and read that section. So hopefully I will improve what I self-declare is one of my worst deficits and that's policy development. And so I'm looking at putting up a schedule with a four-month window on each of those. I wanted the board to know that superintendent initiative that's being carried out right now by Mrs. Nelson is to have Mrs. Nelson be in classrooms in, in all of the different buildings observing the instruction and how it lines up with our curriculum, et cetera, so that we can start getting more of a K-12 vision into how do we build upon curriculum so that by the end of their twelfth grade year, they truly have been exposed to everything in the curriculum. Teachers and principals have been cautious and cautioning me about making sure that we don't cross the line as far as principals are the ones that evaluate teachers as far as job status and whether they're following through on everything that's expected of them. My vision is for the instructional observations to be parallel to when Mrs. Hinker goes in and observes the ESL program or when special education and Mrs. Waylander goes in and observes what's going on with special ed. That they become then a resource for those principals in order to get as much continuity in, in what we're doing in order to affect teaching and learning. I want to do an advertisement tonight, I, I should have posted one on my Facebook page for the superintendent, I haven't yet, but I would highly encourage people this evening and in the next three evenings to tune into Channel Six or even better, attend the auditorium at the high school for the Salvation Army's Christmas basket program. It's a telethon for those that are new in the community and it's remarkable the amount of money that they raise in order to create food baskets. And then incorporating many of our students, particularly in our Kiwanis, junior Kiwanis organization, I'm missing the term for it. Key Club, thank you, to go out and help put the baskets together during the week before Christmas in order to, to feed people and allow their holidays to be worthy. And that is all going on, you can listen to it on the radio each night, I believe on KOKK, and you can also tune in on television and by all means, give generously to that community event. And I'd also commend that this is not possible other places if they had to spend money on communication. But our HHS video kids, just like they provide the expertise in here, they're the ones that are producing the television show. We thank Mr. Sardo, we thank Mr. Dramstad and all of those that are involved with the students in putting that together. I suspect that's why we might be missing a board member or two this evening, that and other activities. And then again, I mentioned that with the three-tier graduation, the state superintendents meet on December sixth in order to do a review of legislation, which will probably be a nice segue into Mr. Bischoff's report because our agenda items will be very similar to the school boards. How did I do, did I segue that right to you, Mr. Chairman?
Just awesome.
Okay.
Are there any questions for our superintendent? Okay, with that, we will go to Garrett for his delegate assembly report.
All right, November seventeenth, couple Fridays ago, I went over to peer, took in the delegate assembly for the ASBSD. It's a pretty short meeting, I think it only took about an hour and fifteen minutes to get through it all, but it was a good meeting. ASBSD's financial report was something, I thought I'd highlight this for you guys. If you want, it'd probably only take a half an hour, I could probably go through the whole thing with you guys. No? All right. They paid off their billing this year, five hundred and twelve thousand dollar note they had, they had a bunch of cash on hand, so they paid that off and it's going to save them a bunch of money over future years, so I thought that was something kind of neat to highlight, that the association's in pretty good health as far as the finances go. And if you want to look at that, I got a copy of that here. There was one bylaw change that came up. In the past, if somebody didn't get re-elected to the school board or had to step out of the school board and they were on the board, the only way they could get somebody back on the board is if they were from the same region and the same enrollment size. And they've had some problems in the past getting that done. So they did make one change to bylaws. They're going to still stick within the same region, but if they go out to the same enrollment size schools and they can't find somebody to serve on that board, they're going to open it up then after that and allow somebody from that region to be on the board, so they don't have holes in their board. So there was one bylaw change and that got passed. As far as the standing positions and resolutions, everything passed as, as presented. It was pretty, pretty straightforward, not a lot of discussion on, on most of those items. Getting into the advocacy priorities and what they're going to focus on for the next year, the first one is students receiving alternative instruction, the homeschooling issue, that's going to be their number one issue on, on getting into that issue and figuring that out. Number two issue would be their school funding. There's some concern out there that schools aren't going to get CPI or the three percent, they're not going to get in that range. There's talk that CPI is what, one point three, I think, something around there. There's people worried that it's going to be below a percent. So there's talk right now, they were asking us to go out and talk to our legislators, make sure they knew about that rule, talk to them about that at our next meeting. The third one was the sales tax revenue that they were going to focus on. And then the last issue was repurposing the federal funding for school choice expansion. So those are the four issues they're going to press on for the upcoming session.
Did you make any headway on the eighteen?
Nope, couldn't even get it off the, off the docket to talk, so.
Gave it a good run.
That's right.
Any questions for Garrett? Thanks, good report.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, we have no old business tonight, two items of new business. Our first item of new business is a first reading of a tab handbook revision. We have that in our board packet and Mrs. Nelson is here if there's any questions.
Am I correct, Ms. Nelson, that this is a compliance issue, that's something that we were instructed to put in place, is that right? Okay, and it?
It's the way I read it too, yeah. Being recommended to meet federal requirements.
There's no questions or comments, this will serve as our first reading and we'll have it on the next agenda for second reading and approval then. Okay, our final item of new business is a new contract for our superintendent for three years for the 2018 through 2021 school years. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve this and then we're going to talk about it.
So moved, seconded.
Been moved and seconded to prove the contract is presented in our packet. I'll just say a couple things. Mr. Nebelsek is in his seventh year as our superintendent. He's been unique amongst ESD superintendents in that he's always operated on just a one-year contract where the norm is multi-year contracts or continuing contracts. Mr. Nebelsek, Mr. Nebelsek has expressed a desire to continue being our superintendent. So we've drafted a three-year contract that offers some protections for him and also for the school district. I'm going to open it up to comments or questions from any other board members.
I think that it's appropriate to point out that this is something that, I don't know that we would be doing except for the fact that Mr. Nebelsek is getting to that stage where our retirement policy would kick in for him. And if he, if we didn't have something in a long-term contract, he wouldn't be able to utilize our retirement policy that we have for every other employee. And so I think that's, with that motivation in mind, it's important to know that we're doing this because we want to be able to offer him to stay on longer than the retirement policy would provide for, and no extra expense to the district. And so it protects him and his family along with the district and we want to keep him around longer and helps us to get ready for the period of transition when eventually he does decide to retire, but we know he'll be here for at least the next three years and then we'll kind of take it from there depending on how he wants to proceed with his, his career and how the board is at at that stage. But I don't think that there's any, anything that the public needs to be worried about about why all of a sudden we're moving from a year-to-year contract to a multi-year contract. We're getting, I think the district is getting a good deal and he's getting a good deal and I'm glad we're able to get this thing done.
Yes, and this will help with the transition to, in the future, when there is a different superintendent, this will probably be more the norm than any one-year contract. And, you know, in three years, maybe Mr. Nebelsek will want to keep working as superintendent, in which case we will negotiate new contracts at that time.
Yeah, but I think that it is good for the board to get back in the habit of having multi-year contracts and dealing with those because that's the way every other superintendent is and that's the way we'll have, we'll be expecting to do it when we get a new superintendent. We're just lucky that when Mr. Nebelsek came on as superintendent, he was already in a position where he didn't need that, he was already in the community, he was well-established here, he didn't need the, the guarantee that comes with a multi-year contract.
He never asked for one.
Exactly, he never asked for one and so we had a good benefit of that, I mean, that was just a great deal for the district when he came on and, and so it's just good for everybody as we're planning for transition in years to come.
Okay, is there any further questions, comments, board members?
Yes, I just want to say that this is my fifth year on the board and I'm grateful for Terry's leadership that he offers us and both, both at this district level and what he offers through the state, through the different boards that he serves on, so just grateful to have him here.
I concur with that, he's been a great leader for our district, he brought us out of some troubling times and I think our district is in great shape because of him.
I think it's a testament to the respect he has around the state when he gets appointed to the teacher, not the, the school finance accountability board, a board that had been in place for several months and he gets named to the board and they immediately want to make him president. And, and so that tells you that we, that he has respect around the state and that's good for us because then he can use that to help lobby for us on the state level.
Absolutely, well said. Any further comments, questions? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on the motion. The motion is to approve the three-year contract as presented for our superintendent. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. This completes our agenda, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn, those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Okay, we are adjourned everyone, thank you.